All right, I want to welcome everybody. I'm James Farren of the Law Offices, James Scott Farren, and we're just happy that you all were able to make it on relatively short notice to talk about this important case. I want to start with some housekeeping. Did anybody not sign in? I just want to make sure that we don't have anybody who's not on our side in the room because we want to talk fairly openly about the case and our strategies. So, it looks like everybody signed the sheets? That's great. We're videotaping this for the benefit, we've had a lot of people who are not in the area and are interested in this, and so we're videotaping this for them. And we're going to make this available afterwards for people who weren't able to make it here tonight. But let me start by introducing our team. We've got lawyers, paralegals here. Gary Jackson is right here. He was with the Law Offices at Jason Taylor. And Larry Surbin also with their offices back there. Gary is somebody who's worked on numerous class actions before, a lot of them big cases. He used to be a partner at the Womble Carlisle Firm. That's important because we believe they are going to be the law firm that's defending this case. So he's been on the other, he knows them, knows them well. From our firm, back in the back is Stephanie King, Stephanie Rodriguez. Stephanie, some of you may have already talked to her before. She is a veteran of our firm. She was part of our black farmer's litigation, and she's a fine lawyer. Also in the back is Jeremy Maddox, also from our firm, from our Charlotte office. He also worked in the black farmer case. And with him is Michael Rossler from our office, who is in the Charlotte area, and he's here to help too. And we have two fine paralegals who are, signed everybody in and are manning the door, Greg Pungar and Kerry Campbell. And they're the paralegals who are going to be working on this case. That's the team. And not least is Hoyt Testner. He's going to be our, he's a renowned lawyer in the state of North Carolina, handled a lot of big cases, complex cases, also worked at the Womble Carlisle Firm, I believe. And he's one of the leading lawyers in the state, and he's going to be leading our litigation team. So we've got an all-star cast here. This is going to be a big litigation, it's going to be well defended, and it's our belief that you have the best chance for success going against the adversaries. In this case, if you have a powerful, experienced firm behind you with talented people. It's not going to be easy, it never is, but especially in a case of this magnitude. So a little bit about our law firm. We have 38 lawyers, 14 offices throughout the state, lots of great talent, lots of resources. We're not going to be outmanned in this fight. We also have experience in big cases. We had the lead role in the black farmer's litigation against the United States government, which resulted in a $1.25 billion settlement. And so we had 90,000 people that we represented in that case, 18,000 successfully recovered. So we have a lot of experience in handling big, complex cases. This case, we're already up and running. We have, I think at last count, already 173 people that we represent on this case, and I expect that number is going to be growing. So we are, we're a big, powerful enterprise. We've tried to put together a dream team of talent so that we can bring the best representation to bear for people. You're going to hear about our strategies as we go forward, but I wanted to bring the best into this case because it's going to be, it's a big, important fight, and we want to make sure that our representation is as powerful and as effective as possible. So I'm really proud of the team that we have together, that we brought together. And without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Hoyt Testner.
Thanks, Jim. Thank you all for coming out. Tell me, how many of you are current students? Anybody? Okay. How about graduates? How many of you have transferred and are at another school? You're currently at another school? How many of you would like to transfer and plan on finishing up somewhere else? Okay, okay, thank you. The reason I ask that question is, you've probably heard, it's certainly been in the news, and it's been, there's been a few class actions that have been filed. Three, I believe. And in fact, we thought that's what we were going to do too, is file class actions. Gary Jackson's going to talk more about class actions because there's nobody in this state that has had more experience with class actions and mass torts than Gary. He's been a super lawyer in that area of class action and mass torts for 17 years. And we worked together, Womble Carlisle, and we've been friends for 25 years. And so we brought Gary in because it looked like it was going to be a class action. But then, you notice when you're raising your hands in here, everybody's got a little bit of different situation. And so a class action is sort of the lowest common denominator. And as I said, Gary will talk more about it, but we decided that the best way to represent our clients was to file individual claims. Now, that's going to be more work on us to do that, but it's the only way that we have a shot at getting the full recovery that you deserve. Now, I'm so sorry that you guys are going through this. I thought about it. I went to Campbell Law School. And I went in 1985, and I was telling these ladies about this earlier. I went in 1985. And the school started in 1976. So I was only nine years old when I went there. And here you are, this was 11 years after your school started, and here's the situation that you find yourself in. So I know what it's like to be in a new school, and what people think about it, and how you're doing it. But then to have, find out the things that you found out about your school and the information that they had, and they didn't share with you and put you in this spot. Many of you have moved from all over the country, uprooted lives, to chase a dream, and have just made it that much more difficult for you. We can't do anything about the law school completion, but we could try to help you get on the path where you can complete it, get the jobs, pass the bar, whatever you need to do. We'll, I'm going to have Gary come up. Gary's going to talk to you about class actions. What we'd like for you to do is, we're here and available, we're going to answer some questions, we'll answer your individual questions. But if you'll go to www.csl.faren.com, that will get you through to answering, it's sort of, ask you some questions, give some general information of whether you would qualify to be a client. If it is, we're going to let you know, and then you can enter in and get into another portal to be able to answer questions. And in any event, in any of this, if you go to the Law Offices, James Scott Farren, all of our contact information is up there. And of course, we've got it here, and you can contact us, and we'll be happy to answer your questions. Now, as I told you, Gary Jackson has an incredible amount of experience on class actions and mass torts. And that's sort of what we look at this, is mass torts. Gary's going to talk to you about class actions and sort of our thought process of going through that. And then I'm going to get back up and tell you sort of about how we plan on doing things with individual lawsuits. Thank you.
Thank you, Hoyt. The day after the Department of Education made its announcement, I started getting calls from folks, from lawyers. Some of you know those lawyers, Bill Powers, Jeff Warren. And we looked, and I talked with Hoyt that day, and we looked very carefully at whether we thought a class action would be appropriate. Because we didn't want to jump into a litigation that we thought was either not going to be successful, or if it ultimately was, was not going to provide sufficient recovery through settlement. So there were three lawsuits that were filed, and as we continued to consider what the best approach was, we came to the conclusion that it would be individual lawsuits. And there is precedent for that, and some precedent for it in the cases of for-profit educational institutions. Now, when we looked at the class action route, we concluded, and I'll look at, the first point is objectively looking at whether this should be a class action. In some ways, it meets the class action criteria, numerosity, for sure. But we would have to establish to get a class certified that common issues predominated over individual issues. And while there is a core of misconduct by this school and the companies that control it, and while that core conduct has resulted in damages to many people, current students, people who didn't graduate, people who did graduate, we came to the conclusion that the individual issues would predominate. And for that reason, that it was, there was not a very strong probability of success. Individual issues like, should a student have been admitted? What did the school do in terms of scholarships, in terms of the curve, in terms of probation and re-acceptance? What were, what was the background of the student in terms of GPA, LSAT? How much did they borrow? Did they finish? If they did finish, did they pass the bar? All of those issues are confounding factors in trying to establish one class action. The other thing that we saw was that to sustain the class action, there has to be typicality. The claims of the class representatives have to be typical of the class members. And we concluded that that would be a very tough obstacle. And the third thing that we looked at was what they call superiority. What is the superior device to achieve recovery? If it is an individual lawsuit, and individual lawsuits are filed, that militates against a class action being certified. And I think that what we're going to find here, we filed, have filed on behalf of nine plaintiffs, and our intention individually, and our intention is to continue filing the lawsuits and having them consolidated before a single judge in state court in Mecklenburg County. I think it will be difficult to successfully pursue a class action on that third ground because it appears to us that the class action is not a superior method. Let me address the more subjective issues with a class action. The class actions that were filed here were filed in federal court. There were two in the Western District here in Charlotte, one in the Middle District in Greensboro. And the federal courts have been very unkind to class actions, particularly the Western District. They don't look very favorably upon class actions. Then, if you look at how long it takes even to get it certified, this is sort of the anatomy of a class action. It's filed, there are motions to dismiss brought by the defendants, and that takes months to sort out and to be resolved. If the case is dismissed, the class is not certified, but individual, those individuals could proceed. If it is not dismissed, then you go through discovery on class certification issues. Then you go to a motion for class certification. And if the defendant, if you win it, if the plaintiff gets a class certified in the federal court as opposed to the state court, it's immediately appealable and would be appealed to the Fourth Circuit. Now, I'll give you an example. We have currently a case against the state of North Carolina, a class action on behalf of 220,000 retirees. And we're trying to recover healthcare benefits that they were promised after they vested in the system, but that they were denied, that were taken away from them. We filed that case over four years ago. And in September, it was certified as a class. And in December, we got summary judgment on liability. And, but it took us over four years. And as much as I believe in that case, there will be undoubtedly appeals upon appeals to the, they can't appeal the class certification because it's a state court, but ultimately there could be appeals that take many more years. And the final point that I would make is that if the class has to be narrowly framed, and I've struggled to figure out how the class could be so framed that it would be sustained as a class. But what happens often in these cases is there's a motion for class certification, there are settlement discussions, and as Hoyt said, it's the lowest common denominator. Individuals, you stand on your own case, your own circumstances, and yeah, it's harder, it's a lot harder. You've got to slog through all this stuff. But I'll give you one example of where we did that. I'm more often in the class action arena. But many years ago, there was a product that people were using on houses, synthetic stucco. And synthetic stucco was a bad product because it allowed water to get in, and houses had a lot of damage. And there was a class action filed against the manufacturers of that product. We decided to file individual lawsuits instead of going with the class action. And we filed a few hundred. And at the end of the day, we could establish for each homeowner their own damages, their own circumstances, their own reliance, which will vary. And the class action settled for anywhere from $2 to $4 a square foot of synthetic stucco. Our cases settled in a range of $25 to $30 a square foot. It was tough prosecuting those cases, but it was the right way to go then, and I think it's the right way to go now. But the importance of being here tonight is to simply, you may not want to pursue anything. You may want to wait for the class. You may want to pursue an individual case. But we felt like it was important for you to consider the pros and cons, advantages and disadvantages, so that you could make an informed decision.
Let's stay up there, Gary. We might answer some questions. Anybody have any questions about sort of the procedure right now? Okay. Well, as Gary said, what we're looking at doing is doing individual claims. Now, when he said it takes some work, it takes work on our part, but it takes work on your part. And so you've got to decide what you want to do, if you want to take ownership of what has happened to you. And if you do, then in individual cases, you will make the decision about your case. We will tell you what our opinion is and what we think you ought to do under the circumstances, but it's your case, and you make the decision in an individual case. But we can't file that case without your help, or no lawyer can. We've got to know your individual circumstances. We've got to know what you've been through. So we're going to need help from you. It's very, it's different from a class action. In a class action, you've got two, three, four representative plaintiffs, and they're the only ones that do anything. You don't have to, you don't have to do anything if you don't want to. But it certainly impacts the damages, and then you do have the timeframe that you have to work with. So that's something that you all have to decide. Our goal, we filed, we've already filed on behalf of nine plaintiffs. We have another, over 160 more to go. It's just going to be a rolling filing. We're just going to continue to, as we get the information, the faster we can get it, we are going to continue to keep filing. And it's been, you know, our experience, that when you get in a situation like this, we will ask the Chief Justice of the Supreme Court to designate this as an exceptional case. And if that's done, then one Superior Court Judge, under the general rules of practice, 2.1, would be assigned to the case, to hear it all the way through. And we believe there's ways that you could handle it, a lot of the issues more economically by having all of us together. But for us, there's certainly strength in numbers. I mean, the law firms that are representing the entire Infalaw group will number in the thousands. So that's what we're going to be going up against. So, you know, I think there's strength in numbers for us, working together. So, you know, we, we're happy to take your questions. It's a little bit awkward, you know, in a room with this many people here. Is everybody that, you know, truthfully signed the sign-in sheet, you're here because you should be. But there's always a chance that there's somebody here that signed it that was not an officer of the court, or is not going to be an officer of the court. And so if you've got some questions that we can answer, we'll try in this forum, but I don't want to embarrass anybody. But we're going to be hanging around here. You can come up to us individually. You can certainly contact us through the website, both either through the, coming through the portal or calling us. But we did get, you know, a few questions that, you know, people have been asking, and so, you know, and so we thought we would, you know, afraid that we'd have so many people that it would be, you know, a little bit awkward really to hear questions, and maybe you don't want to ask them out loud, and I understand. But, like, you know, we've heard people say, well, what about, you know, what if the law school retaliates against us for this? And I know, I used to always, and still do frankly, my kids are grown now, but whenever they answer a question with a question, I say, well, you can't answer a question with a question. But the only thing that really came to mind to me is, why do you care if this law school retaliates against you, given the situation they put you in? I don't know what they can do to you. You know, all you're doing now is exercising your rights that you were trying to get a law license or a job that allowed you to do that for other people. So that you didn't get the information that you should have been given and the education you should have been given. One question was, Gary, why are you filing in state court instead of federal court?
Well, federal court, as I said, the federal system is less sympathetic to consumers, and especially to class actions. And a certification motion can be appealed, and it will take a long time. It's state court, and I want to get back to this issue of superiority because I just, I think I've sort of glossed over it. Because you may be sitting there saying, well, you know, you usually file a class action. Why wouldn't you file a class action here? The class action that I mentioned with the state retirees, there's probably a loss of $1,000 or $2,000 per person. You cannot have an individual lawsuit. It's not economically viable. We have decided that because of the astronomical student loans, because of the cost of transferring, the cost of going to a new school, the inability to pass the bar for graduates, perhaps the underemployment of graduates, those are all quantifiable. And they're not $1,000 or $2,000. Most class actions involve smaller amounts. So in addition to the state court being the best place, I wanted to clarify that.
Thank you. We had, should I pursue debt forgiveness? Yes, there's absolutely no harm in doing that. If your debt is forgiven by the Department of Education or through that program, your loans, it would lessen your damages, and it should. I mean, your damages are what they are. So if your loan is forgiven, then that's great. Anything you can do, there's no harm in that. The only other alternative is, of course, the closing of the school generates a different type of loan forgiveness, but it also takes away any credits that you have. The borrower's defense rule doesn't take away your credits. Yes, ma'am?
Loan forgiveness, I've done a little bit of research. If I was to go buy a house or something, does that lower my credit, or does that put something on there? I saw there's some ramifications that it kind of has a, like a squash on my record that.
Stephanie?
I didn't hear that, actually. I pointed to the regulation that the Parrows Defense Program is under. If there has been anything reported on your credit, the student, the Parrows Education will report that to the credit agency so it is removed once you're done.
Okay, thank you. Well, and, you know, the credit agencies are independent, they could put it on there. But the thing is, is if your loan is in default or not being paid, it's already on there already. So then that, as Stephanie said, if you got the loan forgiveness, at least it would then give the explanation. Yes, ma'am?
So the loan forgiveness, pursuing that doesn't just qualify you necessarily for recovery under an individual lawsuit?
No, it doesn't. But it would reduce your damages if you recovered that loan forgiveness, like I say, as it should. But in the end, that works out the same for you. But no, that's exactly right. Thank you for asking that.
Questions in the camera.
Gary, one question was, would we be suing the Department of Education? And if not, why not?
Well, we have, I believe, such a strong, compelling case against the school and its corporate owners that I would not want to detract from that case by including the Department of Education. I think that it presents extraneous issues that distract the strength of our case. And I think that we want to also have the cooperation of the Department of Education as we go forward.
Yes, ma'am.
I'm sorry, is there any, just to sort of springboard off of that, is there any possibility the school could impede the Department of Education? Because my understanding is that the school is pointing fingers at the Department of Ed, and so on and so forth.
The question is, is there any possibility that the school would impede the Department of Education?
And I wish they would. Because, getting back to those stucco cases, we'd sue a manufacturer, and the manufacturer would bring in the general contractor and the subcontractors. And they would spend all their time blaming each other, pointing the finger. I don't think their case against the Department of Education would be strong, but if they did it, God bless them.
Yes, ma'am, do you have a question?
Well, I was just wondering if anyone had kind of examined the sufficiency of funds if we pursued just Infalaw in itself. Is there going to be enough to sustain a recovery for each individual suit, or?
The question is, has anyone done any investigation as to the sufficiency of the funds? There's not been really any investigation that I know of, and I suspect that given the fact that we have several entities. We've got the Charlotte School of Law LLC, we've got Infalaw LLC, we've got Infalaw Holdings, it goes all the way up to Sterling Partners, that is a type of hedge fund that finds ways... that is a, a type of hedge fund that finds ways to invest in different areas and maximize their profit and sell them for their investors. We know that Sterling Partners, at least it's reported, has about $4 billion under investment. We know that Infalaw owns two other law schools, and we know they have been, if you look at the numbers, they had to have been extremely profitable at the Charlotte School of Law as they are the other two. But you're right, that, that, that could be another battle afterwards, but, you know, as we go along. But we, we can't control what they're going to do. We can only control what we're going to do for our clients.
Sterling will undoubtedly try to get out of the suit. We have included them. I'm not sure the class actions include them or not, but...
One does, another two doesn't.
But if you look at literature and marketing material going way back, Sterling is represented as an entity which stands behind this law school. Now, I don't know how far that went. I know it's, and we hadn't completed any research. Stephanie, I don't know if you know either, but I think there's a reasonable expectation that given those representations, Sterling could be on the hook.
To piggyback off of that, I'm sorry to use Infalaw question time, but what is the likelihood of the Department of Education actually pursuing a suit against Infalaw?
What is the possi-
Because that letter seemed to like kind of set up, you know?
Yeah, the question was, what is the possibility that the Department of Education would, sorry, I didn't mean to talk over you.
No, no, you're fine. And then do they have priority over any individual suit by any means?
No, they wouldn't have priority over the suit. And then there, there is that possibility. I mean, that would be something for the U.S. Attorney's Office to look at and decide whether they want to pursue that case. But in the end, if, the, the way I would see it is if they recovered and got their money back, they would by definition have to forgive your loans because that's what the money was used for. So ultimately, you know, when it comes to that, which it sort of dovetails back into what we've been talking about, there isn't a cookie cutter for these cases for a class action because in that situation, if all of your loan debt got forgiven, the taxpayers got their money back from the, from the Department of Education, then the claims are, what did it cost you to come to law school? Try to transfer, move, the, the opportunity cost, the lost income, you know, the hardship on your family. I mean, we've, we've talked to people that's, you know, had documented, you know, mental anguish, emotional damages over what they've been through. So none of that is ever going to be recovered from, from the Department of Education.
And related to that, somebody asked me earlier, I guess there's a possibility of a KEYTAM or whistleblower case. Let's say that a faculty member or an administration person months ago had revealed information and to, to a lawyer, and they filed a sealed KEYTAM complaint, and they're investigating that. But even if that's, we wouldn't know if that's happened until the U.S. Justice Department decides to proceed in connection with the Department of Education. And if they did, everything that Hoyt said about these consequential damages would still hold true.
We were, you know, and, and I think this applies to some of, some of you all of, if I've already graduated and passed the bar, do I still have a claim? It's go, it's going to depend. Given this situation, if you pass the bar, you're out working, but you try to get another job or interview for another job, and you don't get it because you graduated from the Charlotte School of Law, yeah, and you might have a claim then. But, you know, frankly, if you've graduated and passed the bar, you probably have much less of a claim than someone who has not been in that, and it sort of works its way back. But that's, again, individual questions for us, and you absolutely may have a claim. Can't answer it for sure, but, but that's why we're, we're trying to look at them each one individually, and, and it'll have a discussion with everyone individually as to what their claim would be worth. Yes, ma'am?
Kind of along those lines, and I'm not sure if you are comfortable answering this. I noticed in the invitation that it was for anybody who had attended this school or paid money to this school from obviously background on, and I was just wondering what to submit because I've got friends that are earlier graduates and stuff are wondering why they can't.
You'll that or you'll?
Well, I think that that is because the facts that we can demonstrate in terms of their deception are much more forceful during that period. On the other hand, through discovery, we might find that, that the period goes back further, that their, their trail of deceit and omission goes back further. But at this point, all we have is, is the information on the recent, more recent events.
And then, you know, you get into statute of limitation issues also. Yes, sir? Somebody raise your hand? Yes, sir?
Pardon my ignorance. So with the class action, I know some of the other firms are kind of pooling their money, you know, upfront to handle it, but because this is being handled individually, how's that working? Individual planners or you guys kind of cost sharing additionally or what's the approach?
So the question is, is basically asking about the cost in, in the case. Well, I, you know, we, you would, if you decide to go through our website, you'll see our retainer agreement, understand what that is. I will tell you that from our standpoint, I, we handle our cases on a contingency fee basis. So if there's no recovery, there's, there's no recovery for you, no fee for us. We advance the expenses for the case. If there is a recovery for the case, then you will pay your proportionate expenses with everyone else. If there is no recovery, you, we will waive those expenses. You will not owe us anything. So we're not, we're not asking you to pay a retainer or pay anything upfront. Is that, I'm sorry, did that answer your question? Yes, sir? Yes, ma'am?
What year do you go back to? I think it's another-
2012.
And you had to graduate?
We wanted any money that had been in from 2012 forward, if you'd paid any money or had any losses from going to the law school from there. I think that's about all we have time for. Like I said, we're going to be around here. You can ask us questions, contact us, go to the website, come through the portals, and, and fill out those questionnaires. If you decide to retain us, it'll be, that's to help us prepare the complaints that we're going to have going forward. And you need to decide what you want to do because if you want to not be involved and have no decision about your case, that is perfectly fine. And you can, when you find out if a class is certified and it goes up on appeal, and if the class stays, then you will receive, if they recover, whatever you receive. You won't have to do anything. If you decide you want to go the individual route, whomever you hire to do it, you're going to have to be involved. You're going to have to give us the facts of your situation, the damages that you've incurred, and you've got to be involved in the case. If it does go to trial, you got to sit there with us. You got to testify. You may have to give your deposition, but you got to be involved. So you got to decide the individual cases that allow you a chance to tell your story, obtain all of your damages, is going to take some work on your part too. If that's not what you want to do, then we're not the right people for you. But in any event, feel free to contact us, talk to us tonight, and we'll answer any questions we can.
Let me add something.
Yes, sir.
On the commitment to the case, it's, we can't promise that every case we file won't be tried, but if our experience in mass torts is any indication, then let's say there are 200 or 300 individual cases, there may be four or five that are tried. It's called bellwether cases. It is used in pharmaceutical cases. I'm not saying that that will happen, but it would, there would be a pretty good likelihood that all these cases are not going to be tried.